Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting, March 8th, nineteen, nineteen, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is called to order. We're not going to do a roll call. All members are in attendance. If you could take note of that, please. Our next two items on our agenda are invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. Today's invocation is going to be from a friend of mine, Jeff McAfee. Gentlemen, if appropriate, if you'd please remove your hats. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, and please remain standing after the invocation is over, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. With that, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. If we could all just bow our heads and pray. God, we thank you for who you are. You are loving and gracious. You are almighty. You are transcendent. You are ever-present. And we thank you for the freedom that is ours because of you. We thank you, God, for the privilege of meeting to conduct this public discourse today. We pause now to ask for your direction for the matters at hand. We acknowledge that the best decision is always found in the company of your desires and your will, your way, your truth in your life. We pray for your protection over our city, that our streets would be safe, that our homes would be places of comfort and peace. We pray for those who watch over us, some present here tonight, our police officers and firefighters, our paramedics and hospital workers. We pray your protection over our schools, and we pray for all other organizations that make our city a better place through their service. We pray your blessings on the citizens represented here this evening, that their commitment to be here tonight would be met with your favor. We pray your blessings over the speakers and the presenters gathered here tonight, that the causes for which they appear would be properly represented. We pray your blessings on the members of the city council, that they would lead with integrity and compassion, and that their votes would be in accordance for that which is the best for our city for short term and the long. We pray your blessings to our mayor, that he would lead with honesty and character, efficiency and clarity, all with only the best interests for the people and the concerns he represents. And with this all, we pray for the family members of those who are here tonight, for your direction, your protection, your blessings, and we pray this all in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Next item is just that. It's from the Minutes, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two voting meeting. Council members, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two voting meeting.
Second. Have motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second Councilmember Hugh to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your ayes have it, do have it. That passes. Proclamations? We have no proclamations today. Consent agenda. We'll now move to our consent agenda. Items two through thirteen. Items on the consent agenda are routine nature. Have they been previously studied by this council at a workshop session? They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Have we any speaker cards for any consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items two through thirteen?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt consent agenda items two through thirteen.
Second. Have motion from Councilmember Clark, second Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the consent items two through thirteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your ayes have it, do have it. That also carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, can you read consent resolutions, item fourteen through twenty-one, please?
Item fourteen, resolution number R twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement for motorcycle skills training located at the southwest corner of Ninety-first Avenue and Cardinals Way with Special Olympics Arizona. Item fourteen, resolution number R twenty-two dash fifteen, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adjusting solid waste commercial rates for front load and roll-off services and establishing an effective date. Item sixteen, resolution number R twenty-two dash sixteen, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with the THT twenty-eight LLC for use of city-owned real property to support downtown restaurant operations adjacent to sixty-seven twenty-nine North Fifty-seventh Drive, Glendale, Arizona, eight-five-three-zero-one. Item seventeen, resolution number R twenty-two dash seventeen, resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona Department of Transportation for the installation of a wrong-way detection system at State Route one-on-one Loop and Maryland Avenue. Item eighteen, resolution number R twenty-two dash eighteen, resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a grant pass-through agreement with the city of Phoenix for the purpose of providing transit services. Item nineteen, resolution number R twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of an award number fifteen PBJA dash twenty-one dash GG dash zero-four-two-eight-one dash VTCX under the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Adult Drug Court and Veterans Treatment Court Discretionary Grant Program through the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, in the approximate amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars on behalf of the Glendale City Court. Item twenty, resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with Glendale Elementary School District number forty for the use of Desert Garden Park Joint Park Site. Item twenty-one, resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty-one, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, directing and entering into amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement between Maricopa County Human Services Department for Workforce Development Services at the Glendale Community Center. That concludes the consent resolutions, and there are no speaker cards.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve items fourteen through twenty-one on a consent resolutions agenda?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve consent resolutions number fourteen through twenty-one.
Second.
Have motion from Councilmember Milner, second Councilmember Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your ayes have it, do have it. That also carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item twenty-two, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Bell Air Mechanical LLC for HVAC service and repair.
Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item twenty-two?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described linking agreement with Bell Air Management LLC, no, Bell Air Mechanical LLC.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Turner, second Councilmember Tomachoff to recommend action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
This is one of three five-year contracts that will be offered tonight, and as my habit and practice, I believe that five-year contracts are not appropriate, as council members usually are only on for four years. So with that, I will be voting nay on this item and several others.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Milner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-three, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with CS Group, Inc., doing business as Chiller Services, Inc., FBN, for HVAC equipment installation and services.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move item twenty-three for approval.
Second.
Trying to figure out who said what. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to through the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't know who's playing the music. I need you to turn it off. Thank you. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Milner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-four, please?
Award of IFB twenty-two dash twenty-three and authorization to enter into an agreement with Sky Design Concepts, Inc., for the fiberglass skylight panel replacement. There are no speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any presenters? None. Councilmembers, any questions? No questions. Can I get a motion to approve item twenty-four?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number twenty-four, award of IFB twenty-two twenty-three and authorization into the enter into an agreement with Sky Design Concepts, Inc.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Milner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Moving on to new business. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-five, please?
Resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, supporting and approving Nestle USA application for foreign trade zone status, authorizing staff to take any future action necessary, including execution of applicable documents in relation to this foreign trade zone site within the Greater Maricopa Foreign Trade Zone.
Mayor, members of the council, hit five staff report this evening is Randy Huggins, our economic development officer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request for city council to adopt a resolution supporting the Nestle USA application for foreign trade zone, or FTZ, status on plus or minus one-hundred-and-thirty-nine acres, authorizing staff to take any future action necessary, including execution of applicable documents in relation to this foreign trade zone with the Greater Maricopa Foreign Trade Zone, GMFTZ. There's no upfront cost or ongoing cost incurred by the city in the creation or maintenance of the foreign trade zone. Property owners and users pay for the maintenance costs of the zone. The FTZ site does provide for an effective seventy-one percent reduction in property taxes for qualified end-users from seventeen-point-five percent to five percent assessment ratio. However, the economic impact of the four-hundred-million-dollar capital investment in an FTZ, even with the reduction, is superior for the city as a shared by applied economics in their study dated February twenty-twenty-two. This four-hundred-million-dollar investment will include a six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot Nestle USA state-of-the-art manufacturing facility built on the one-hundred-and-thirty-nine acres of land, and will employ over two-hundred people with average wages of sixty thousand a year. It's important to note that the applied economics study was based on the original conservative project specs that I just mentioned, but the most recent update increased the capital investment to six-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars, hiring three-hundred-and-fifty new positions in a six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot state-of-the-art facility. The benefit of having an FTZ in the city of Glendale include greatly enhancing the city's ability to compete with other valley cities that have already created an FTZ for industrial attraction. FTZs encourage local economic stimulation, increase the local tax base as compared to vacant agricultural lands. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Randy, hold on just a second. Ian Wang, who is that? Okay, say where you are. You filled out one of these, and you didn't say what you want to talk about, a gold card.
Ah, okay.
I need to find out if it's this subject or something later. Okay, if it's for bus service, he filled out a second blue card. I'm okay there. So it's not the gold card. We can ignore this. Okay. Okay, very good. All right, Randy, thank you. We have any questions for Randy from the council? None? Well, that was easy, wasn't it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion for item twenty-five, please?
Yes, Mayor. I am most pleased to offer resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty-two, and on behalf of the city council, we welcome Nestle Corporation to the city of Glendale.
Was that your motion?
That was my motion.
Okay, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Milner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, makes it unanimous. Okay, moving on to council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one. I will remind everyone, and anyone from the city is invited, that I will be having my next district meeting this Thursday evening, March tenth, at six p.m. at the Media Center. We bop around the district because there's no definitive meeting place that we can call home. So this time, we're trying out the Media Center, and I encourage everyone inside the district and outside the district to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Are you lobbying?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Milner?
I nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor. Quickly, I'd like for Choy residents to save the date of May twelfth. We're going to be having a spring fling at the Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center on May twelfth that evening. We're going to have a barbecue. Now that we're kind of getting into the final, hopefully, the final phase of the pandemic. We haven't had a real fun meeting. We had one meeting. The details will follow, but just save the date, May twelfth. It'll be from either five or five-thirty to seven or seven-thirty p.m. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, and I do want to tell everybody of something that's coming up, and I don't, Adam, maybe you can remember the date. I don't remember it exactly. We haven't been able to do it the last couple of years, but we are doing it this year, and it's an induction ceremony for the young men and women that have made the decision to go into our armed services. And I think what makes this so special is these young people make that decision. We hold a special ceremony for them. It's called an induction ceremony. We will hold it up at Fifty-Ninth Avenue and Bell Road, the church right there on the corner. It used to be the movie theater. And we give a chance for the young people to come across stage. We give them a challenge coin welcoming them as a, basically, it says first to salute you. With that certificate, we give them a stall that has the branch of service that they chose to go into. And when all of these young people have gone through, and they get back in their seats, they all stand up and they all get sworn in at the same time. A couple weeks later, they graduate high school, and then appropriately, they go to whatever branch of service that they're enlisting in. The date?
May sixth.
May sixth. So it really is a special event. The veterans, the people that have served in the past, to watch them, it's really, it's really quite impressive. Many of them have told me that nobody did anything like that for them. In fact, most of their friends didn't even know they went into the service until they came home on leave. So I think it's a good way to recognize young people making that decision to serve our country. Less than one percent of our population is in the military, and it's nice to know that we have people still willing to defend our freedoms. I'm very proud of that. So we want to recognize them. We want to recognize families and their siblings, let them know that there's some people out there still willing to defend our country and our constitution. So that's coming up. Typically, we don't open it up to the public, not because we don't want the public there, just because it's a, it's a small room that holds about four-hundred people. And by the time the inductees and their families show up, and then our volunteers, the choirs, and everybody else, we usually fill the place up. But I wanted you to know that we're recognizing our young people for what they're doing for our country. So to me, that's very special, and I do really, truly enjoy it. Okay, next on our agenda is our citizens' comments. The agenda is made available to our citizens, the opportunity to the citizens to bring information, business before this council that's not on the printed agenda. And before we open this up to the speakers, I want to remind everybody in the audience and anyone speaking tonight that this is not, that this is a public meeting. And as the chair, I'm not going to tolerate any profanity, aggression, or threats to the councilor's staff. If you violate the rules, we're not going to warn you. We're just simply going to escort you out of the building. I don't intend that. I don't expect that to happen tonight. I just want to make sure that everybody understands the rules. With that said, we have somebody that we haven't seen in quite some time, and that's the Marwicks. They're from, I think they live in Chicago, but they frequent, frequent Arizona in, for the last couple of years with the COVID. They haven't been here to visit us. So Andrew, we do have some changes since you've been here in the past. We are limiting people to three minutes.
Okay.
We were going to limit people with blue shirts and gray hair, but we thought we'll make an exception for you. But with that, welcome back. Welcome to your wife, and you have three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wires. You guys have done such an excellent job of dealing with the coyotes. I really haven't had any advice to add for the last couple of years. That's why I haven't been here. Unfortunately, there's another city in the valley that needs to take some advice. Hugh Holman and Corey Woods don't seem to have learned anything through, from what Glendale has been through in the last fifteen years. By the way, Glendale has been so nasty to the poor coyotes that Glendale designed the America West Arena with very poor hockey sightlines. Oh, sorry, that was Phoenix did that. Does Hugh Holman, by the way, Hugh Holman wrote an article in the Phoenix Business Journal about how Phoenix is a bunch of hypocrites trying to cheat Tempe out of opportunities for development. Does Hugh Holman realize that State Farm Stadium is in Glendale and not in Phoenix? From his article, it seemed that it was in Phoenix. I couldn't tell. Like, oh, like Andrew Barroway doesn't know how to pronounce Gila River Arena. Gila River Arena, Andrew. Oh, George Gosby made so much profit on the coyotes. Oops, let's not talk about that. You can just read his wife's book about that story. Moving from Glendale to Tempe won't make much of a difference. The mythical East Valley that the coyotes promote, full of hockey fans, doesn't exist. Mesa is the largest city in the East Valley, population five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. The demographic of the income, sixty thousand dollars, is not going to support a lot of hockey ticket sales, especially with the prices that coyotes have been mentioning recently. Central to North Scottsdale, Cave Creek, Northeast Phoenix is where it seems to be the largest concentration of fans. If the coyotes want to provide different data, otherwise, go ahead. And the difference, if you're coming from that area, and you get on the one-on-one going west to Glendale, or go south going into Tempe, it's not going to make more than about ten minutes of difference. Instead of promoting the opening of the two-oh-two South Mountain Freeway and the widening of the one-on-one through Northeast Phoenix, instead of promoting it, oh, you can get there faster. Take the South Mountain Freeway. Coyotes go, Glendale's so far, Glendale's so terrible, Glendale's so far. That's how you get track fans. Bottom line, moving to Tempe will not improve the coyote situation any more than, than moving to the Gila River Arena with better sightlines did. Sky Harbor Airport with nearly fifty million passenger years, passengers a year is probably the biggest economic driver in the valley. Phoenix is expanding the number of flights and the distances of flights to fly. There's at least three flights a day now to Hawaii, for example. Hopefully, there'll be more flights to Europe and eventually flights to Asia. Phoenix is at eleven hundred feet and subject to international standard atmosphere plus twenty-five degrees centigrade conditions. Hugh Holman and Corey Woods should learn to read the takeoff performance charts like Jerry Wires can. Okay, I'll just wrap this up. There's some things about his properties in both Reno and Las Vegas. Those are high-risk, high-leverage properties. And also, his brother, Richard Morello, owns a Deville Hotel, has been in litigation with the city of Miami Beach for an extended, for about twelve years. And Alex Morello doesn't care about Tempe. If he drives Millway Avenue to the ground, he won't care any more about that than his brother does about the historic Deville Hotel in Miami Beach.
Thank you, sir.
Is it my time up, or is it still forty-seven?
Your time's up. That's what that red flashing light.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Wires.
Very good. Mr. Wang, you have three minutes, sir. What I need you folks to do when you come up, you name the city you live in. If it's Glendale, the district that you happen to live in. If you know it. If not, then give us your crossroads. Mr. Wang, you have three minutes.
Okay. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. And anyways, we're talking about improved bus services on Route one-eight-six Union Hills Drive, weekdays from every hour to every half-hour. Also, extension of Route sixty on Bethany Home Road from Eighty-third Avenue to Ninety-fifth Avenue and Cardinals Way, where the Crystal Lagoons, Mission Park is being built. That's another transit area I came up with. I'm not sure if Kevin Link's here, but.
Okay, I need you to state your name also, sir.
Ian Wang.
Okay. Okay, you've still got two and a half minutes.
Okay. Also, I was wondering if the city of Glendale might improve weekend bus service, especially on Saturday to half-hour. But that's something Kevin Link would have to talk to me about.
Okay, we can't, we can't discuss. You can just tell us what your issues are, and then we'll take that into account.
Okay.
Was that all you had then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dibler, you know the drill.
Hi, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in Council District Five. There is a homeless problem at the Star Crest Center at Fifty-Nine Avenue and Olive Avenue across the street from Glendale Community College. There are a lot of homeless with shopping carts sleeping at the shopping center during the nighttime. For example, a few days ago, a homeless person was sleeping behind the Glendale Community College sign at same intersection. This cost problem was students going to get lunch at Seven-Eleven. The shopping center owner needed to take care of the homeless program by relocating them to nonprofit organizations such as Phoenix Pressure Mission, Saint Vincent DePaul Society, and Homewood Brown. Finally, I would like to see the Arizona Color Conos to win Super Bowl fifty-seven. Thank you for no time in consideration.
Thank you, James. Lynn Bulmer, you're up. After Lynn, it'll be Joyce Capson, if you can be ready to go. Again, if you live in a city, it looks like both of you probably do, just the name of your districts. I don't need your address. And then if you would state your name, then you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Lynn Bulmer. I live over in Granada Estates in Glendale, and I'm right there with James. We have a horrible, horrible homeless, homeless problem on our block. We have homes that have tents in the back. These people run that neighborhood back and forth all night. I'm sure there's drug issues, on bicycles, same old, same old. And it's been an ongoing problem. The house at the end of my block has a porta potty. I mean, some areas in Granada have improved quite a bit, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done. So, and that's just, I mean, I may as well be talking to God, because this has been fifteen years doing the same thing. So that's my issues.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Joyce? Again, Sandra Howard, you're up next. If you'd be ready to go, I'd appreciate it. Again, state your name, and then the district that you live in, of course, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joyce Capson. I live in Ray Melnar's district, and I'm not a happy camper. I'm here today to complain about your code compliance department and how it's running rogue, and how none of you, not you, Mr. Turner, not you, Ms. Clark, not you, Mr. Aldama, not you, Mayor Wires, not you, Mr. Hugh, and of course, Hugh Melnar. You know, Tomachoff, I got a little hope for. I'm tired. I'm sick. I'm bedridden. But because the city of Glendale would not allow me to make my comments and have them spoken, possibly by the city clerk's office, and have them recorded on Channel Eleven today, I had to, oh, you will send them all to the council members. Well, I've seen what good that does. It does nothing. I've sent you people countless emails with photographs showing your department, the city code department is running rogue. We passed laws on June twenty-second of last year. Who's enforcing them? Nobody. An inoperable vehicle, you're kidding me, right? I'm disgusted. And Councilmember Turner, at the very last code review committee meeting, I was the woman that said I wasted two and a half years of my life. And I obviously wasn't kidding. And you- And you made the comment that you felt the citizen was wrong. Well, please, sir, I ask you today, please prove me wrong, because I'm not. I've turned in over 50 code complaints, and then I got smart because of Warren Wilfong, and I requested 50. I went to the city and requested that I get the documents to back those up. And I got them. And you should hear what your code compliance officers are up there saying. We're not going to enforce inoperable vehicle because I won't stand up in court. Or they pretend they don't see them. Or they lie directly and say, we can't see the plates from the street, when I've got photographs to prove them completely wrong. And I want to know today why nobody on this city council, you guys are the ones that we're supposed to be following. Our code compliance department is supposed to be following, correct me if I'm wrong, the direction of the city council. And they are not. They are by far not. And I'll send you 50 more emails with my, I can do it, not a problem. And I got tired, keep smiling, Ray. I got tired of sending them because nobody was responding back. I couldn't get Rick St. John to respond back. None of you responded back. This isn't just a Saguaro District problem. This is across the city of Glendale problem. These were codes that we stood by for two and a half years to get changed, and nobody's enforcing them. So I'm really kind of curious what everybody has to say for themselves up there sitting on the city council.
You go ahead and wrap it up.
Well, thank you, Mayor Wires. You have a blessed day, and maybe you'll send me an email and explain it, because nobody else can.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Ms. Howard. Following her will be James Greeley.
Hi.
Ma'am, pull the mic down just a little bit. There you go.
I'm in the Saguaro District at Granada Estates also.
And your name and...
Sandra Howard.
Perfect.
I hate to say this, but this is a blighted area. My husband and I inherited property there, and when my mother-in-law bought that property over 60 years ago, it was a nice place to live. Nice property, but now it's blighted. I'm working to get my area cleaned up. I've been hampered by the city code. Like we said, we send in pictures, we send in requests. They're stamped and stated, and then they say they've gone out, and then they kick them back out. Nothing's been done. Joyce and I drive around. I work with Joyce. I give her wheels. They close it before any action is actually taken. And like she said, we have pictures. I'd like to encourage you to take a quick trip out there to see for yourselves. I imagine most of you know where it is and what it looks like. I have a neighbor who has a volleyball court. The net is hanging down. He has an old aquarium sitting in the yard. There's piles of crap everywhere, but nothing gets done. I know that people drive around in pickup trucks, because I've seen them in my area, but how can they not see what I see? That's my question. How can they see what I can't see, what I can see? I see it every day, and something has to be done. It can't get better until someone takes a stand and says, make it better. And that's why I'm here today. I also have three, I counted them today, three travel trailers or motorhomes on my side of the street, which is on the east side on Nancy Road, and it's in the neighborhood. Three travel trailers or motorhomes with people living in them. I have a picture of one, but I don't have a picture of the other two. I know this is against the code, but yet, of course, you only know that at night when the lights are on or the people are parked in front. So how do you know? Because I'm telling you. I'm telling code, but they're not doing anything about it. Please send one, someone to clean up this area. I would like my investment to be valued, valued for what it is. But as I see in the last 60 years, not going up, going down because of my neighbors. I can't take on each and every person. So what do I do? I try with code, but code is not enforcing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greeley? And then Robin Odegaard. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. You're following Again, if you live in a city of Glendale, state your district, your name, and if you don't live in a city, just the city you do live in. You have three minutes.
James Greeley. I live in Peoria, Arizona, at Granada Estates. And I'm concerned about the code out there, because we have cars parked all over, everywhere. There's one beside, on 71st Avenue, that's got nine cars sitting out in front of his house. And he works on his cars all hours of the night. And it's, who is, is code supposed to pick that up, or are we supposed to tattle on our neighbor? How's that work?
Again, sir, this is not for discussion tonight. It's for you to tell us what the issues are, and then we'll react accordingly.
Is the code supposed to go out there and see that and write him up a ticket for it?
It's not an interaction, sir.
Huh?
You have three minutes to tell us the issues. It's not an interaction back and forth.
Okay. And then people parking the front yards all over, and we turn them in, but it doesn't do any good. Nobody does anything about it. I think they just drive by, and well, I was out here, and that's as far as we got. And by the way, since Buffy left, I haven't seen our placement out there in our area since Buffy left.
Okay. I do want to clarify. You've stated and you wrote down you live in Peoria?
Yeah, we live at Granada Estates.
That's a Peoria address, please.
Okay. You live in the city of Glendale with a Peoria address?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that you don't actually live in Peoria. You live in Glendale.
Okay, so anyway...
The U.S. Postal Service, it's their thing. It's not ours.
So...
Okay. Yeah, anybody watching on TV would go, well, why is he complaining if he lives in Peoria about Glendale? I just wanted to clarify, you live in Glendale.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We're at Granada Estates out there.
Right, very good. Very good.
Or we don't have anybody to help us out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, tonight, people are listening.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Robin? I'll need you to pronounce your name. I'm sure I got it messed up. Yeah, come on up to the microphone, sir. State your district that you live in, and you have three minutes.
I live in Glendale, off of Nancy Road.
And your name, sir.
Huh?
Your name.
Robin Odegaard.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. My beef is about the speeding, reckless driving we have on Nancy Road, which is the widest street in the area of Granada Estates. Now, I've lived there for 44 years, and it's getting bad and bad, I mean, worse. Drag racing through the night, sometimes during the daytime. It's mostly all youngsters, really don't care. And I thought it was 25 miles per hour in that area, in the residential area, right? Why do they drive 40, 50, 80 mile an hour? I guess they don't think until something does happen. Had three incidents on 69th Avenue and Nancy, three wrecks already since I've been there. One was almost a fatality because of speeding. So I'm really concerned. We need to hold it down, and you guys should look into it, because it's getting worse every day. And the racket, some of these cars or pickups or whatever, they're so loud, it rattles my tin can I live in, mobile home, and it's not fair to all of my neighbors either. So that's the only complaint I have. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. There being no further business tonight before this council, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. No objection from this council. Meeting's adjourned.